In the absence of Chairman Tim Foster, I as the Vice Chairman, like to call the October 6, 2025 Board of Commissioners regular meeting to order at this time. Our first order of business is the invocation by the County Attorney Brett DeSelm's followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Lord be with the Commissioners in their deliberations and bless them with wisdom and guidance as they address the items on today's agenda. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. Amen. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faith, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here today, join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
You all rise from the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, again, I just want to welcome everybody. Like I said, Chairman Foster is on vacation and will be missing this meeting. And at this time, I'd like to acknowledge the elected officials that are here now. We've got Elderman Rick Grant from North Toppsil Beach and his wife Lisa. They were sitting in the third row. We've got the Mayor from Holly Ridge, Pete Parney. Welcome. You guys are always here. I appreciate it. And in the back of the room, we have our Sheriff Chris Thomas, who's always here. And I do want to recognize one individual. He's not here right now because I don't think he gets the recognition he deserves. His Deputy Carlos Phillips, he always stands here. He's out in the front. He stands out here religiously. And if you can hear me, Carlos, if you're listening, thank you. We appreciate you and we appreciate what you do for the county. Okay. Would ask that all of you in attendance, please set your cell phones to silent or vibrate mode so that there are no interruptions during this meeting. And the first item for review is Item 1, the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have adopted the agenda. I'll move to Item 2, approval of the consent or items on the consent agenda. Just real quick, if any Commissioner has questions or concerns about any consent agenda, please identify the item which will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately toward the end of the meeting. If an item is identified, I will call for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to move Item N to the regular agenda from the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to remove Item N, did you say?
N, yes.
Okay, N is in November?
Correct.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
You don't have to.
We don't?
That's correct. Any Commissioner can remove it. Now we just need a motion to adopt the consent agenda as amended.
Okay, I stand corrected. So I'll make a motion to go ahead and adopt the corrected agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move, so moved. In this particular time, I just kind of want to remind everybody, the Board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited to no more than five minutes and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioners' comment period on the agenda. Mr. Smithman, do we have any members of the public signed up to speak during the public comment period?
Yes, Sir, Commissioner Knapp. Our first speaker today is Rick Grant.
Good morning, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. Thanks for letting me speak. David told me I've only got five minutes to thank you guys, so I will try to do within that period of time. Last week, on your behalf, Tim Foster came before us and talked about the partnership that we have built with you all. Our town, our people are very, very grateful for, I think, what we've been able to accomplish. And I appreciate it personally. I know that you guys have been very generous, your time to me, sorry, you all have been very generous to your time to me and to the town. And I think the partnership and I think the commitment that you've made to the town, thank you very much. We really appreciate it. We've got some big projects in front of us right now. And again, you know, having said that, the money that comes in and the fire taxes has been a real blessing for us. As you know, we're in the middle of building a fire station. The second thing is we're getting ready, we're planning probably the largest, not planning the largest, we are planning the largest beach project this town has ever done. And we're looking, we're not asking you for money in terms of that, but it's, we're in the permitting process, it's to rebuild about 60% of the beaches that we've got left. And we're very proud of that. At some point, if you wanted, we could bring somebody to command our beach engineer to go into all the specifics. But it's a big undertaking and we've been planning and doing those things for some time. And moving forward, it's great to have your commitment and the partnership too, because I think we can do things together. And I think as a town, we really want to work with you all. I think there's a very good partnership. And as I keep saying here, and David sometimes teases me about is, we are your beach. And so we do appreciate what you all are doing. I know you put in the budget this year, David, and approved by you all to work at the beach and make that commitment. And the fact that Tim came in on your behalf to talk to us, I don't know, in the years that I have lived there, I have never had one of you come and make a presentation. He did an excellent job. Now, the reaction to that is, I don't think we've ever invited you to come before us. So I guess it's the old, if you don't ask, nobody's going to say yes, right? And so again, thank you very much. We appreciate everything that you do for us. Thank you. And there's another gentleman here. I think he's going to be the third speaker that's going to talk and thank you on behalf of Ocean City. That's a big part of our community and he's on their HOA down there, and so he'll be speaking to you as well. Thank you very much and appreciate everything that you all do for us. Let's keep working together. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. It's always a pleasure to hear you come up and give remarks and to see both you and Mr. Parney on always at our meetings. And it shows the cooperation between Onslow County and the surrounding areas, and I really do appreciate it because I don't think you guys have missed one meeting. All right, Mr. Smithman, do we have any other speakers?
Yes, Sir. We, our second speaker is Ari Rakowitz.
Thank you for continuing to accept public comment and to members of the public advocating for diversity, equity, inclusion, and sustainability. Remember marginalized communities often overlap and negative effects compound. One excellent resource is the Immigrant Legal Resource Center, which where policymakers can learn about improving local policy for protecting immigrants at ilrc.org. And anyone can print Know Your Rights cards available in 49 languages at ilrc.org/red-cards. Another is democracync.org, where you can learn on their news page how eliminating Sunday from early voting and attacking diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives negatively affects poor and black communities. The Onslow County Board of Elections notes that staffing polls on Sunday was such a challenge during previous attempts that for the, at least the last two election cycles, they did not try with the current level of underfunding and understaffing. Visit the County Board of Elections website to learn more or apply for elections work in Onslow, that's O-N-S-L-O-W-N-A-A-C-P.org for a list of voter advocacy groups active locally. Voters should not suffer suppression due to religious intolerance. In 2014, with support from not only, but notably here, the Richard Dawkins Foundation, the team at Openly Secular adapted PFLAG materials to provide guidance to people of faith who want to be better allies. To learn more about supporting people with kindness and critical thinking, visit richarddawkins.net, openlysecular.org, and pflag.org. PFLAG and Openly Secular are both organizations where the goal is to preserve relationships. And in these cases, that means ensuring extra safeguards are in place. I will read excerpts from brochures adapted from PFLAG material first by Openly Secular for broader audiences and by me for parents and people who serve the public in Onslow County, especially the Boards of Commission and Education. Adapted from Opening Minds, Changing Hearts. Remember this paradox, it is never too late to show your love and support, but justice delayed is justice denied. Give yourself the opportunity to explore your feelings, which may at times be contradictory and confusing. Once you are ready to support your secular or LGBTQ2IA+ loved ones, all you have to do is show us you care. Understand, consider, ask, respect, and express. Supporting your loved ones is going to require you to understand a few things. Secular and LGBTQ2IA+ people are normal, everyday people guided by our own values and morals. It is extremely important that you understand that most stereotypes are not true. Additionally, opening up can be a difficult and scary process. No matter how easy or difficult learning about your loved ones' sexual orientations or gender identities or differing religious beliefs is for you, it is not meant to hurt or offend you, and telling you was probably difficult and scary for them. You should understand that your loved one opened up because they want to have an honest relationship with you and that sharing who they are does not have to change your relationship. Supporting your loved one may be difficult, but you should consider how valuable the relationship with your loved one was to you prior to finding out about their secular beliefs, sexual orientations, or gender identities. Your loved one didn't just wake up and decide to be secular or gay or poly or trans. They're the same person today as they were before you knew. It is also important to consider how your responses affect our well-being. Negative reactions that are critical, dismissive, and judgmental are correlated with poor psychological well-being. The good news is it is never too late to show your love and support. The bad news is the longer you wait, the more you contribute to systemic oppression through reactions you may not understand yet as negative that your loved ones do. Justice delayed is justice denied. In order to better understand your secular or LGBTQ2IA+ loved ones, ask questions. If they don't clarify these questions when opening up to you, ask them why they made the decision to be, why we made the decision to be openly secular or openly LGBTQ2IA+, what our secular or relationship values are, what is and is not going to change, and what, most importantly, how we need you to support us. The only Board member to ask me questions about my positions responded critically, dismissively, and judgmentally to my responses, as Board members have often done during these meetings, without asking questions. Keep in mind that just as you want to be respected regardless of your beliefs, so do your loved ones, including your secular and LGBTQ2IA+ neighbors and visitors. Showing some respect can look different to different people. However, avoid debating, dismissing, invalidating, or condemning your secular or LGBTQ2IA+ loved ones, as supporting your loved ones means respecting our positions. We don't believe that we need to be saved from our identities or beliefs, and above all else, realize it is not your responsibility to out loved ones to people. Expressing your love, support, and if applicable, your own secular or LGBTQ2IA+ identities is the best way to let your loved one know that you are on our side. Many people think that acceptance is synonymous with agreement. It's not. Let us know through your actions that regardless of a difference of beliefs, you value your relationship with us. Understand, consider, ask, respect, and express you care. Adapted from for employers understanding secular employees. Secular, like sexual orientations and gender, can be an invisible social identity. Disclosing is paradoxical. On one hand, disclosure increases the risk of experiencing discrimination.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Smithman, do we have any other speakers?
Yes, Sir. We have one more speaker today. It is, the speaker is Kip Malcolm.
Good morning, Vice Commissioner, or Vice Chairman and members of the Board. My name is Kip Malcolm, and I am a resident of North Toppsil Beach, and I'm also the Vice President of the Ocean City Beach Citizens Council. First, I want to take a moment to sincerely thank the Board and Onslow County for the continued support of the Ocean City Jazz Festival. For over a decade, this signature event has brought world-class music, culture, and community together here on our coast. What started as a neighborhood gathering has grown into a celebrated festival that attracts visitors from across the state and beyond. Your partnership, whether through logistical assistance, public support, or vital financial support, has played a meaningful role in that success, and we are truly grateful. The Ocean City Jazz Festival is more than just a weekend of music. It's a celebration of heritage, resiliency, and community, honoring the legacy of Ocean City. Ocean City is the first black-owned oceanfront community in North Carolina. The festival helps sustain the legacy for future generations while also boosting our local economy and shining a positive spotlight on Onslow County. I want to briefly share the role of the Ocean City Beach Citizens Council. Our council serves as a liaison between the citizens of North Toppsil Beach, Ocean City Beach, as well as county and state partners. We work collaborative, collaboratively to advocate for infrastructure improvements, storm preparedness, beach nourishment, and community initiatives that protect the neighborhood's history and its future. We are proud part of the larger North Toppsil Beach and Onslow County communities, and we look forward to continuing to work together to strengthen partnerships that benefit residents, visitors, and local businesses alike. Again, I sincerely thank you for your continued support and the opportunity to speak this morning.
All right, thank you, Sir. Very much appreciated. Do we have any other speakers that have signed up, Mr. Smithman?
No, Sir. That's all.
All right, since we have no other speakers, we're going to move to Item 4, which will be a public hearing. And I will turn this over to our County Attorney, Mr. Brett DeSelm's.
Yes, Sir. In April of 2022, the Board of Commissioners approved an incentive developing agreement with Trask Burton Park MOB LLC. This was for a medical office building as well as some restaurants that would be built here in Burton Park. The SOT amendment that's before you today is, there's no additional funding, there's no request for additional monies to be paid, but instead that the medical office building, instead of being 50,000 square feet, would be 36,000. The employment of, because of the reduced size, there'll be employment of 75 people between the medical office building and the restaurants as opposed to 100. And then some additional time to complete the projects, and they've separated out these projects so that the incentive agreement and the grants would be separated between the medical office building and the restaurants. Again, no additional monies, it's just separating the two because they're on different timetables. The medical office building will be completed before August 2027. So you can already see that they've started some site clearing and things of that nature out there. The restaurants, they have until October 2028. So it's just separating those two things out. Before you consider that, there's a public hearing that has to be held. So the next step in this, Mr. Vice Chair, would be to open the public hearing and see whether we have any public comments on it. And then after that public hearing, you'll be able to consider the proposed amendment. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
I appreciate it, Mr. DeSelm's. At this time, we will open up the public hearing. Mr. Smithman, do we have any citizens signed up for this public hearing?
No, Sir. We do not.
Okay. At this time, then, if there are anybody else in the audience that would like to say something, please speak now. If not, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and we need a motion and a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I would like to, just real quick, you said no more county money. There is zero county money involved in this project. Is that correct?
We, yeah, it's basically what will happen is they have to pay their taxes and then they, then the amount of, there's no new money other than what's generated through tax revenue. Is the best way to say it.
Just want to make that clear.
Yes, Sir.
You tripped them up there, Mr. Bennett.
Sorry about that.
That was a play on words there, if you hadn't caught it from a, from Mr. Bennett there. But real quick on the Trask project, I'm really glad to see this come to fruition. Because from years, I think since I've been sitting here as a Commissioner and as long as Mr. Buchanan, we've been wanting to push the development of Burton Park, in which we're moving in the right direction. And Mr. Trask has done a remarkable job in meeting the requirements, permitting, and et cetera. So I'm pretty excited about it, and I hope this is a stepping stone for future construction projects and future ideas within Burton Park. Because this is an area that we really need to develop, and we really need to get it going, and I think it'll bring in a lot of extra revenue for this county. Anybody else have any other comments or anything? Okay. All right, we're going to move to Item 5. We had a motion to discuss Item N on the consent agenda. And the consent agenda is the project ordinances for parks improvement projects. And I'll call Mr. Kevin Patterson up, our Finance Officer, up to discuss this, please.
Good morning. Yes, these projects, each of these were funded in the original budget ordinance that was established by transfers from the general fund into the various, into the capital projects. These project ordinances basically establish those inside of those individual processes. So it is a two-step situation. So the, each of these items were appropriated out of the general fund, so the tax values have already been established in the order. This is allowing us to begin the operations in these. The first project is, of course, the indoor recreation facility for $2 million. This is, right now, we have an estimated $40 million in the capital improvement plan for it over the next two years, going through construction. Right now, this $2 million would begin the initial survey, starting the initial surveys throughout the project, determining exactly what we think the best fit for the community, for the county are, and what the future goals are. Also similar for Onslow and Heinz Farm projects, $2 million, that would also start with renovation or for the planning and ultimate renovation for those projects. Again, $2 million is not the cost of the renovation of each of those fields into the ultimate goals. The $2 million is a beginning phase for those. Part of that is, in this planning phase of that, we will determine the future goal of the, or the endpoint for those parks, or at least for this phase of those parks, and determine the appropriate values of those projects in total. Also with the master park, the parks' master plan and redevelopment and additional $2 million, this is again, the refresh, the master plan for the parks and recreation for our parks. That was done, I believe, in 2020. We're looking to refresh this. And this goes along with, in the capital improvement plans, we are looking at an investment of approximately $20 million for the parks over the next five years. And this is the planning phase of those parks as well as identifying areas where we're looking to potentially acquire additional areas to provide recreational services to underserved areas so that we can meet the needs of the community as a whole as best possible. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I just, I appreciate you coming forward, and I'm sorry that it was last minute. It was brought to your attention. I just felt like it was very important to shed some light on and be transparent about what it is we're doing with such a large amount of money. And so thank you for coming to share with us about that. It is something that we had decided back in January, February at our retreat, one of our five goals, and I wanted the public to be aware of that with the community vitality and really working on being the best place to live, work, and play. So I just thought that was important to have it out on the public. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yeah.
The, could you explain to us how much of this you think will go to debt service bonds or whatever that we may need to be able to support, particularly as we get to the 20 million?
This first $6 million, this was not, these are for studies and putting us in positions to make the initial investments. When we start into constructions such as the indoor recreation facility, that is a 40 million, or an estimated $40 million project that will be bonded as well as, as we get in, if there are other significant investments that go in land acquire, land acquisitions, they may be combined in with other projects that we're looking to invest. But right now, the only planned debt issuance in Parks and Recreation is for the indoor recreation facility.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Before we go into the vote, I just want to commend my colleague here to my left for what she's said, Lisa, for bringing it out to show transparency, to discuss this. A lot of times when we have a consent agenda item, we just go ahead and vote on it and we kind of run it through, but Ms. Carpenter decided that she wanted the public to understand what the money was being spent for. And I applaud her efforts on being transparent so that you guys would be, would have the same information that we did. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I think we've concluded the agenda, and now we're going to go into managers' comments. Mr. Smithman, do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. This conversation about the budget transfer, creating the project funds to begin the initiation of projects is a first step. You know, the first step was the planning. Now we're in the execution. You know, these projects take time. We have four major priorities for this year, this Board does, including designing, understanding how to build a new library and museum. That would probably take us five years, I would think, to get to that place where we actually see something going vertical. The indoor recreation facility and the EMS stations are the first things that we're going to see actually happen. EMS stations, we're very ambitious about, that we can see, we, I would hope, I hope that we can see at least two of the three new EMS stations that we need to build coming out of the ground in less than 12 months from now. But the planning that takes place on the front end is the laborious part, and good planning on the front end makes the project go well. So the indoor recreation facility will be something that the citizens see first, along with some modest park improvements. The $2 million you put aside for park improvements, that's the beginning of a 10-year journey. It's going to take us 10 years to get through the county and truly upgrade everything in a responsible fashion. We have some high-growth areas that don't have parks right now, and we are focused on finding how to serve folks out toward Maysville, folks in north and west of Richlands, areas that are growing that really don't have access to amenities. So we're looking into that, but that's a long road, the comprehensive park improvements. And then the fourth item on your priority list is increased communication. And Commissioner Carpenter absolutely did the right thing by further communicating to the public the why we're doing what we do. We have also created, in, as one of many ways that we're trying to implement, your goal of increasing communication. We have our mini strategic plan book that we've made available for the public, but now this is a mini budget book. It breaks down a $380 million budget into areas that we are working that align with our strategic plan and outline the major projects that we're working on. But it also outlines the theme of this year's budget, which was innovation and efficiency. And that's really what we're doing right now, is trying to reduce the amount of physical effort it takes to make this train move. And we're doing it through using our IT systems to make a more efficient service of government for our citizens, which ultimately will provide better service for less money. And we're moving through those processes right now. This card is another part of our increased communication efforts. It is something that every employee in our organization will be provided over the next two weeks, along with a conversation with their supervisor and/or department director, as well as a four-minute video of me introducing this. This is a way that, to educate our employees, 1,500 people, on all the things that they're working on for you, the things that are aligning with your vision that they do every day. And it's a way that we are attempting to further communicate the vision of this Board, but also the tactical steps that we're taking and that they're taking every day to meet your priorities. And then finally, as a part of our, kind of both of these things tied together, we're going to have a very big presence at National Night Out this Saturday night. I hope everyone will be there. I hope people will come out and see what's happening at the county. We will be out in full force, and we will be asking for comments. We will be receiving information about our, the recreation amenities that our citizens desire and they feel that are lacking. We will also be receiving communication from our citizens about our fire service and how they want to be protected, how they see the importance of this fire service in their lives. And we're going to begin our public relations or public input sessions for both our fire master plan and our recreation master plan slash indoor recreation facility, beginning this Saturday. So those are some of the things that we're doing to see through your vision, and I look forward to seeing everybody Saturday night. Thank you.
I appreciate that, Mr. Smithman. All right, we're just going to go down and now it's time for Commissioners' comments, and we'll start down at the end. Mr. Paget?
Thank you, Sir. I won't thank you.
I want to thank everybody for coming, and I think it's so important that everybody understands, Rick, and y'all coming, I appreciate that. Onslow County is one. We are one community. No matter where you live, in the city of Jacksonville, the city of Holly Ridge, Richlands, it don't matter, we're one. And that's how we make things happen. This board takes that very seriously. We look forward to working together to make Onslow County truly better than it is today, and we will continue to do that. And also, I would like to say that I heard that it's so important, I want to say this, that when this Board of Commissioners has a closed session, we need to keep it closed session. And that's so important. And I can tell you from an economic standpoint, if anybody comes and wants to buy a piece of land in our park, they don't want their name out there until it's done. And we need to be very careful, as a board, to make sure that what we talk about, that we talk about and is here for us. So, with that being said, thank you, everybody, for coming, and look forward to seeing you next time. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Paget, I'll slide over to the right side of the room. Commissioner Bennett?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. I appreciate all the, appreciate all the speakers. Mr. Malcolm, I was able to attend the Ocean City Jazz Festival last year, I think it was. Very, very enjoyable time. We appreciate what y'all are doing out there. The consent agenda was quite long. I just wanted to mention that I appreciate Lisa, our Commissioner Pad, Carpenter, bringing the item for the parks off of the agenda for us to talk about. And all these items on the consent agenda, we've talked about extensively in close, or in workshops. All of it is items that have been approved by this board in the past. And, you know, there aren't any, there aren't any secrets here. It's all stuff that we've talked about and that we've agreed on, and it's just a matter of the process that we're trying to work through with the consent agenda. I would also mention a couple of other things on the consent agenda. The Georgetown Renaissance Community Association lease, I appreciate what they're trying to do out in Georgetown. I hope that, since we have extended their opportunity, that they can get together and raise some money to build a community center out in Georgetown that is their goal. And I hope that they are successful at that. The county has given them an extended opportunity to do that. So, and also, the Town of Swansboro IT agreement, the county is going to work with the Town of Swansboro and provide IT services for the Town of Swansboro. Anytime we can get a local agreement between our local government agencies, anytime the county can do something that will benefit our local communities, our other municipalities, then I appreciate that opportunity. I was at Heinz Farm Park, the new playground, with my grandkids over the weekend. They had a blast. If you haven't been to the Heinz Farm Park new playground, you should take your kids or your grandkids out there and let them have some fun. I also was at fire prevention display this weekend at Lowe's, and that was, I appreciate our county volunteer fire departments, our county, Onslow County Fire Department and EMS services for all of their displays. Again, my grandkids had a blast out there this weekend. In the same tone, the EOC, Emergency Operations Center, that we opened, our new EOC, was talking to the mayor of Holly Ridge, Mayor Pete, and with our new space available, we won't have the issues that we had last time. Some of us were in that operations center during Hurricane Florence, and it was a pretty miserable time for our employees. I'm looking forward to, hopefully, we don't have to use it, but if we do, we will have a much better facility for our emergency operations. And finally, I wanted to thank our agricultural extension agents for their Dairy Derby. If you haven't heard about the Dairy Derby, at least I didn't get stepped on by a cow this year, like I did last year, but that was a lot of fun. Mr. Manager was there to help us, and the chairman of the commissioners was there, and Commissioner Carpenter attended that event. And of course, the best part is the homemade ice cream, so if you don't go for anything else, you should go for the ice cream. And I'll finish up by saying, I really do appreciate what our county manager does on a daily basis. He pays attention to what we, as a board, have agreed to, what we have said that we want to do, and he goes full bore to try to achieve the goals that we've set for him. And I know that's not always a friendly situation to be in, it's not always something that's easy, but he doesn't stop. He keeps right on chugging along. I appreciate that. Thank you. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett. Commissioner Davis?
See a lot of staff out today, so staff, thank y'all for being here, thank y'all for being interested in what we're doing up here, and thank you for the hard work y'all do. I know that you guys put some long hours in, some stressful hours in. I see Health Department, Social Services, Finance, Taxes. Just thank y'all for what y'all do. Rick, Mr. Malcolm, Ari, thank y'all for being willing to speak and share your thoughts with us and agree with the partnerships. And I'll just give my Swansboro folks a little bit of a hard time. I'd like to see them here at some of these meetings, so, love you guys, but I waved to the camera for you. But I do appreciate our partners on the commissioners and mayor at Swansboro for working with our county to come up with an agreement for IT. I think it'll be good to see Swansboro save some money, and I'm thankful to see them doing that. I will bring up one concern, and I just, this is for the public to digest, and that, and again, Ms. Lisa had the presence of mind to bring this to our attention before the public here. But as you see, as we're going down the road, and we're building, and we're building, and we're building, it takes money to build, and when we start talking about doing bonds, I want the taxpayers to know, if we start doing bonds, then it puts a lot of pressure on our budget, and it very much could lead to increased taxes. If it's not an increase in the obvious tax, it will be an increase in the net cash out of your pocket. So, I would just ask the public just to be aware, to keep us accountable and watch what we're doing, because when you start talking bonds, that's tax money. That's eventually coming back to you. They have to be paid back. I also noticed that we started, are starting our payments to the YMCA, so for all the folks that were supporting the YMCA effort between the state, the Board of Education, and us, they're making good progress, and I'm excited that we'll eventually get a pool and get that going. So, that's it for me. Thank you, everyone.
Appreciate it. Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes. As you know, I try to make it a rule to not duplicate what everyone has already said, and that's kind of difficult now, so I feel like just saying goodbye, but I'm not going to. I think Royce took the lion's share. One person that I know did not get noticed in the audience was Ted with IT, and I know you're probably here wondering what you're on the hook for with our communications and efficiency, but thank you, I know you work really hard for us, I appreciate that. And library, too, and the airport, man, we got everybody. It's wonderful to see you all. I do, the Dairy Derby was a lot of fun. I loved seeing my granddaughter trying to climb through the slats and pet a cow. That was probably the highlight, and she loved, loved being there. It's so wonderful to see all the activities that we have going on, the partnerships that are definitely growing. I appreciate you coming to share that, because that means the efforts of our staff. David Smitherman is really working, and I think it's important that we bring everybody together, so I thank you for that, and thank you, Mr. Smitherman, for that, too. I had an interesting conversation yesterday on a topic I will not be bringing up, but the gentleman I was speaking to mentioned that back in the day, there was a joke for everybody that's west of here, that used to say, call Onslow One Slow County, which I wasn't here for that, but I thought that was funny, because looking at where we are now, we are certainly not One Slow County anymore, but I liked that pun on, pun on the name a little bit. So, thank you all for coming, look forward to seeing you at National Night Out, that's one of my favorite events, and I definitely will be there, looking for all of you to have some fun, and tell us what you think about the county. Have a great day.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Commissioner Buchanan?
Thank you. Where do I start? The growth, the growth of Onslow County. I mean, I've been very fortunate. I've been sitting here since 2004. I've watched a lot of growth. This building is one of those things. The tower at the airport, the new airport terminal, our new courthouse, our new consolidated human services, we can go on and on and on. Our market analysis for our employees, Lisa's sitting out there, because Lisa and I have been around this, as long as I have, longer than me, I believe, is it, Lisa? But, and David, 15, 16 years ago, I guess, when you come here, he's seen a lot of the growth that we've taken place, and David's been a big part of that. He's worked hard, trying to get things in, he's got some other projects that we're really excited about. This county is growing so fast, from the time I, and I can tell you, when I first started as a police officer in 1971, there was 45 of us deputies, and then I think there was 45 police officers at the same time, not very big. There's 125 JPD officers now, and Chris is in the back, I think he's over 300 with all of his employees, and I might be off a little bit on that, but his deputies are about 120. So, we've watched the growth of this community, and it's going to grow more and more. Stumpsound, Holly Ridge, Richlands, I mean, Holly Ridge is on fire, just like Stumpsound is. The growth is amazing here, but it takes money to make that growth, and the taxpayers are helping us do that, and we are transparent. We're being very transparent in everything that we do. But I want to thank everybody that spoke, tops will be toe. I did speak in front of them many years ago, it's a long time ago, my friend, but when I was the chairman of the Board of Commissioners here at one time. But the working relationships that we're trying to have with all the municipalities are just great. I mean, it's amazing to watch what I've seen over the years. But then, on another note, and this might be a sad note, but when we have a closed session, I am really upset, it stays in closed session. If it goes out of closed session, whoever takes it out of closed session should be sanctioned. And I'm being very serious. I wasn't going to say anything that night, I told the vice chair, I said, no, leave it alone, but Tony brought it up a while ago. But when we have people leaking stuff out of closed session, that's bad, and it's got to stop. And if we find out who the person is, that individual needs to be censored. And I hope everybody understands what I'm saying. What we do, what we work hard at in closed session, there's a reason for that. The public doesn't need to know about that until we figure out what we're trying to get fixed. Do I make myself clear to everybody? Understand what I'm saying? Because some of this is leaking out, and it's actually appalling. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner Buchanan. I had a couple of things I just want to say, and I'm not trying to keep you guys, but I just wanted to say, number one, public comment, I'm going to reach out, I'm going to say, Ari, I appreciate your comments today. It's a perfect example how, you know, certain comments can be taken certain ways in certain meetings, but tonight, you know, I listened to you, she had, she, like anyone else, has the right to express their opinions cordially and professionally in a way that is not confrontational, which I really appreciate you and your comments tonight, and then even though I may not agree with your comments, but you have that right, and I do appreciate that, and I appreciate you getting up and speaking your mind. I just wanted to reiterate, Carlos Phillips, the guy that I mentioned earlier, he always stands here, especially this week, please give him a thank you, because he literally, he religiously stands here throughout the whole meeting, and he watches and he provides security along with the sheriff. He's been doing it for, I don't know how long now, as long as I can remember being a commissioner, and he always goes out and escorts everybody outside and takes care of business. So, just go up to him and shake his hand and say, hey, man, I really appreciate what you do for this county. That'd mean a lot to him, it really would. And speaking of which, don't forget National Night Out this Saturday. It's a celebration of our law enforcement community, the people who put it on the line every day. I know this is a military town, I'm a veteran myself, but I'm also retired law enforcement. These guys put it out there on the line every single day, not knowing if they're going to go home that night protecting the community, and I really do appreciate that. Sheriff, my kudos to you and how involved you are with your sheriff's department. I think we've got the best sheriff's department in North Carolina, to be honest with you, probably got the best sheriff, and I just want to applaud you and thank you for everything and all your men and women that serve all the way from detention to whatever it might be. I appreciate it. Lisa, again, kudos to you for being transparent. I thought that was very respectable, and I had absolutely no problem with that, and I do share your belief in being transparent, letting the community know, so that's commendable. I appreciate that very much, just wanted to tell you that. You see these things that are in front of us, this little pamphlet, and ones about our budget and ones about that, it takes a lot of work. And when you sit here and you look at the goals of the commissioners at the beginning of the year, last year, and what our goals were for this budget year, and to see it transpire and to grow and to put on pieces of paper like this, and to be professionally done like this, this is a great little handout. We've never had this before. And that takes the innovativeness, it takes the leadership of a county manager who does this type of stuff, and it lets it transcend to the people that work for him, to motivate them to do this, because it's modernistic, it's progressive, and very professional. And I want to commend you, David, and your staff for this. These are something that I can take, you know, I have questions all the time about what does a commissioner do? You know, where's our budget going? I can show them something, instead of trying to say something, and I do really appreciate that, because it's just highly professional, and I want to commend you for it, David. The last thing I want to talk about, and I'm going to echo with Mr. Paget and Mr. Buchanan, is that closed sessions, okay? We, as commissioners, we sit up here, and we really do care about the community and try to make the best decisions. It's obvious tonight, with Ms. Carpenter showing, expressing her transparency with that, which, again, I thought was commendable. That's what we're trying to be. But sometimes there are things that we discuss, like personal issues, or whatever it might, personnel issues, or whatever it might be that affect the county, to help us better make a judgment, okay? So, you have a closed meeting. You know, being in the military, we're pretty, we're all pretty familiar with that. You know, you have a secret, top-secret clearance, there are things that are briefed. Okay, it's a no-brainer. You don't run your mouth. I worked narcotics most of my career, you know, the old motto was, what you see, hear, say, hear, stays here when you leave here. That's the way it is, because it's called Operation Security, OPSEC. So, when we have information that goes out of a closed meeting about things that are happening in that closed meeting that only somebody in a closed meeting would know, to me, that's treasonous. That's the only way I can put it. It makes me mad, because those are things that we discuss, we're talking about a project, we're talking about somebody's future, whatever it might be, that stuff not need, does not need to be leaked out to people who are not in a decision-making position. Let me repeat that. It doesn't, the stuff does not get leaked out to somebody who is not involved in the governmental affairs at Onslow County, or in a decision-making process, nor do they have an influence on the decision-making process, as much as they like to think they do. They don't. Okay? Because every one of us up here are individuals, we make our own decisions based on the information that's presented to us, and to the sanctimony of that information, and to protect that information with integrity, but more so with character. That's the way things are. Okay? And we do that as a whole to protect the county, so that we, as commissioners that sit here, that are elected by you, to make the proper decisions. And when that breed, that bridge of trust is broken, or it's burnt in any certain way, okay, to me, you violated everyone's integrity of sitting on that board. So, I'm throwing that out there, no matter, I don't know where the leak came from, but suffice it to say, if it is tracked back to a particular individual that happened to have access to that closed meeting, I agree with Commissioner Buchanan, you ought to be censored and sanctioned, because that is not tolerable. Period. You know, so, I'm mad about it, because those are things that should not, especially at this level, be leaked out. There are certain decisions that we make, certain things that we express in a meeting so that we can make the right decision. And yeah, so I'm really upset about it, and I'm upset about the fact that people on the outside may know what our internal thinking is and conversation is. That is not satisfactory, as far as I'm concerned. And if anybody knows me, I have a high level of that, that integrity in terms of keeping things to yourself. You know, the old saying from World War I, loose ships sink ships? Absolutely it does. So, enough on that, but I commend, commend Commissioner Paget and Commissioner Buchanan for bringing that up, because I was going to lightly touch on it, but apparently I had two commissioners that are very concerned about it, and I'm concerned about that are very concerned about it, and I'm concerned about it, too. Conduct your jobs professionally. Be a professional, especially elected officials. If you're up here when you're charged with information, keep it to yourself. That information is there to help you make better decision for you as a community, period. Other than that, we talked about, a little bit about taxes, and I'm with Commissioner Buchanan on that. We got a lot of projects that are ongoing. We've got a lot of projects that require money. But we also have a lot of projects that not require us to raise taxes. We don't raise taxes. We raise the tax rate, or we lower the tax rate. Okay? That's what we do. And this board has worked hard to lower the tax rate last year. Now, we're getting another reevaluation done next year. Going to cause some concern. Okay? Our goal as commissioners, at least my goal is, and I think I speak for the majority of the commissioners, but I don't know, you have to ask them, is to lower the tax rate. Prices have gone up. We have all these projects here, so what does that make us do as commissioners? We have to think smarter, we have to budget smarter, we have to look at things a whole lot differently. How do we accomplish A, B, C without raising the tax rate, or raising taxes, if you will? How do we work smartly to keep it the same? You know, we, those are the things that we deal with, because anybody who asks you, I am totally against raising any type of tax. I hate taxes. They're necessary evil, I get that, but I absolutely hate them. And I live in the city and the county, so I get double whammy'd on my house and my car, you know? But that's the price that I pay to live within the city limits. But any way that we can lower taxes and to work smarter and better, if there's certain projects that we need to look at, maybe that's kind of do a Doge thing on it, if we don't really need that project, and this is a priority here, that's a decision we'll have to make. But we'll have to do it together, honestly and openly, and do everything we can to stay within our budget, if you understand what I'm saying. Because we got some upcoming projects, and we got some innovative minds here in how to take funds, you know, and circumvent them here, or cut this program. That's what we'll have to do, as far as I'm concerned, so that we continue to meet the growing demands of this county without raising the tax, the tax rate at all. So I just want you to keep that in mind, and we're working very hard to do that, and we have the staff and the commissioners who can do that. So, right, other than that, one thing I will, last thing I'm going to say is, I've heard a lot of talk about expansion along Gun Branch Road. I've heard a lot of talk about housing being built in Gun Branch Road, businesses wanting to go up on Gun Branch Road. And I think I've opposed, and I think some of them here have opposed, a lot of these projects. Why? Because of the traffic congestion. And I've known this for years. I really got a firsthand taste last week when my daughter was involved in a car accident on Gun Branch at 6:30 in the morning. I get a call, and I have to run out there. My daughter got transported to the hospital, she had a seizure, she's got a concussion, but she's okay. But that's not my point. My point is, when I was out there, I already knew Gun Branch was bad. I could not believe the traffic in front of Potter's House on Gun Branch Road. It was horrible. Wall-to-wall, bumper-to-bumper, stop-and-go traffic, and the individual hit my kid, and I'm glad he's safe as well. He was just accelerating, and all of a sudden, traffic stopped, so it wasn't really his fault. It was just kind of an accordion effect. But that road is horrible. And if, you know, as far as I'm concerned, if I'm sitting up here and there's a project of a new business or anything like that on Gun Branch Road, or right off Gun Branch Road, I'm going to be against it, because it doesn't need it, because we need DOT, not us, we need Department of Transportation to get off their lazy rear ends and prioritize Gun Branch Road and make that a safer highway for us into Onslow County, because that's a treacherous road. And I won't even drive, you know, if I have to drive on Gun Branch as a shortcut to get to 24, I won't do it. I'll go 258. Plain and simple, I'm not going to do it. So I just wanted you to keep that in mind, you know, if anybody wants to bring up business projects, you're going to have to really convince me that it's worth it, because I'm probably going to disapprove it, in my opinion, until we do something about Gun Branch Road. But other than that, I want to thank everybody for coming here. I want you, thank you for my debut, speaking in the microphone for Chairman Foster. He will be back next meeting. He should be back in it this week, so he's enjoying himself. I just don't understand how you can take a vacation when you're retired, because he needs to get away. So I'll talk to him about that, it doesn't make any sense to me. But anyway, thank you all for coming, and I appreciate it, and we'll see you at the next meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.